All right, if we can call this meeting to order. This is the January 4th, 2012, our first meeting of the year for the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Walsh just called, he's on the way, will be here in a few minutes, but in his, he gave us the okay to proceed and get started. So, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I think we are missing Wednesday's pet. There may be a minimum temperature allowed for dogs and pets outside. I think there is a minimum temperature for Sherry to be outside. So, we'll move on to item four. To consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting December 1st, 2011. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll move for discussion purposes.
Okay, I'll second. Any discussion?
I would like to propose an amendment to the December 1st minutes of the special Board of Selectmen meeting, page three, in the paragraph that reads, "Mr. Bremer said yes, if the town gets any money, and it would be earmarked as remediation," excuse me, rewind, it's actually page two, "under section B. Mr. Bremer said that if Black Rock Realty gives the town any funding, then it must be for the remediation of the site, otherwise the amount will be shared with the state." And the proposed amendment would be to further clarify his comments. Two, Mr. Bremer said if Black Rock Realty gives the town any funding, which is designated for the parking lot and/or the road, those funds would be shared by the state. This does not preclude the town from receiving and designating funds for site remediation or other conservation requirements, which would not be shared with the state and be kept solely by the town.
Okay. Is that a motion to amend the minutes?
It is.
Okay, I'll second that. Shall we amend them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
I'll submit this, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we're ready to accept the minutes as amended? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Next up, the minutes for the regular meeting, December 7th, 2011. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, here. Any discussion?
Just will note that they, those minutes have been amended and submitted to us in the amended form, and I'm thankful for that, and ready to approve.
Okay. Ready to approve the minutes as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Wow. That's December 7th. Special meeting, December 20th. Oh, the tour, all right. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, done. Motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of December 21st.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, can I have a motion to, next up, our tax collector refunds, can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up. Historian emeritus of the town of Fairfield, to hear, consider and act upon a petition from William D. Lee for authority to repair a grave marker, can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Mr. Lee, do you have a presentation for us?
Shall I go to the air?
If you could, go to the podium, please. Just the microphones are set up there, so.
I'll be very brief about this. There's a new book out, Samuel Smedley, Connecticut privateer. Very popular book, came out this year in the springtime. And in the book, it covers, there's been several books done on Smedley, one of the greatest heroes that was born, raised in Fairfield. And in the book, there's a picture here of the burial ground, where he's buried, in the old burial ground here. And it just so happens, he was born in 1753, but the gravesite, he was buried next to his brother, in the center of the cemetery here. His only stone has been destroyed, it's broken in half, and it can't be repaired. And it just so happens that with the popularity of this book and so on, which I illustrated, it is exactly the 200th anniversary of his burial on June 13th, the year 2012, will be the 200th anniversary. So if we can restore that, that's really wonderful, I think, tribute to this hero. And I just want to have your acceptance to do this, work on this project. We have to go through this in a formal way, and I hope this will work.
Okay. Do you have any questions on that?
No, just a comment, I'll defer to you.
Okay, couple of questions. One is, what are the bodies in town that govern the repair and/or replacement of a grave marker like that?
Well, through the, I believe, but first through the state. Got state recognition of this, and that's been submitted. And then the second is to go to the town through the probate judge's office, which I have done with Dan Crusoe.
Judge Crusoe, would you mind just taking the mic and filling us in a bit on the proper process and procedure by which this is done?
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Let's see, well, the bottom line is this. You, Board of Selectmen of the town of Fairfield, are the burial ground for an ancient burial ground, and that burial ground being the old burial ground on Beetron. You, before any stone for ancient grave marker, may be repaired, moved, or restored from there, you have to approve a request to come to my office to hold a hearing on that very matter. So that's you, that's your, you can empower Mr. Lee to come to my office to do this, at which time we will have a hearing, appointing a guardian for Mr. Captain Smedley's body and his ears, to make sure everything is done right, we'll have a hearing. And assuming that I find the petition of Mr. Lee acceptable, after hearing the evidence, then he'll be authorized to repair that stone and reset it and restore it. Of course, we need, he needs the help from the Historic Commission of the state of Connecticut. So that's the way it works. So you have to authorize him to come to me, otherwise nothing gets done.
Okay. So we authorize Mr. Lee to talk to your office?
That's correct.
Assuming your office approves it. At some point, you go back to the state?
We started with the state.
Yeah, no, I'm assuming they'll, they'll, they're contributing, they're shared, they have a role also, because they want to make sure that it's restored as it would and should be.
And in these economic times, we do have to ask, where does the funding come for the repair?
Very good point. Presently, presently with the interest in this, there have been several people that have come forward with contribution. To do this, we're going to get prices, we're going to form a small committee, I've already talked to some people about this, we are local people, the DAR, representative of the DAR, also, this particular ship, the defense has sailed out of Black Rock Harbor, Bruce Williams, who was harbor master of that particular area, is involved in this, and the financial end of this would be minor. What we want to do is to pay for the restructure of the stone to take place, and in the proper way, with the proper ban, that's what, you just look in there and start fixing things. And that would add some protection to other things in the cemetery that we would be concerned with.
So the current plan is to effect these changes or repairs through private donations?
Yes, or any other, you know, committee. For instance, there's several, there's in Fairfield, the Navy, Port Five, he was an incredible individual who had a background like no other. He was a John Paul Jones of this area, and he lived, he was appointed by George Washington to be in charge of this entire area when he came back from sea. There's a great story of him, he's an important individual. And to have this photographed in this book, which is a national book now, if we don't do something to restore this, I think it's a very important, proper thing to do.
Are there any other points of authorization needed? Does the Historical District Commission have to be involved at any point?
No, no, although they should be aware of it, and they realize what this is, and they would have nothing else to do but to be in favor of it, and I'm sure of that. The thing that they would be most concerned with is that the project is done in the proper manner, and that's why I'm here. And that's why Dan said, Bill, why don't you do this, and I'd be very happy to do it.
Thank you.
Go over, see if that is the project.
Any further comments on your part?
Just a question, you mentioned a minute ago, something about other issues in the cemetery, and.
There are some other stones that need repairing, there are some very famous people in there, John Hancock's Aunt Lydia's buried there, Samuel Penfield's buried there. His stone is in perfect condition. There are several minor stones that could be seen, there's always that problem with vandalism and so forth. With maybe a new interest in this, maybe we can manicure that area and keep it in the way it proper, we should be careful.
So the clarification would be, for this, though, you're focusing simply on one location? You're not looking in terms of this authorization and this process?
Yes, just as one particular location. And for any other, you would have to go through, I would have to go through the same process.
Okay, and the grave marker, the gentleman's name is?
Samuel Smedley. And I will leave this book with you, if you want this book, with a picture. And also, I did the hard work on the cover.
All right, thank you. On behalf of the town of Fairfield, we're grateful to accept the book.
All right.
Yes, couple other que, well, I think that's, do you have any other questions?
No, just thank you for your interest in this and for honoring our history. I think we'll be talking about history in certain respects later today, and I think it's important that we honor that.
Also, the ship that he sailed, the ship defense is a model that's an amusement that I did, I built when I was here. So I have a personal interest in this.
All right, thank you.
Illustration and so forth.
Thank you.
As he did most of the restoration of the sudden tavern over there.
Oh, okay.
I lived there for 15 happy years.
All right, well, thank you. Jan, if we can save that in the office. Let's see, I've got one amendment, that's it, for, one amendment to make, it, right after it says repair a grave marker, I propose and move, we amend that, to say grave marker for Samuel Smedley.
I'll second, is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the public on the amendment? Any amendment only? Back to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion as amended before us, any further discussion on the board? Any discussion from the public on the motion as amended? All right, back to the board, ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Lee, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you very much for, and your interest and spirit in Fairfield and taking care of our tradition and our heritage. All right, next up, request use of the town green. To hear, consider and act upon the following requests, the Fairfield Chamber of Commerce requests the use of the town hall green for Friday, June 22nd, through Saturday and Sunday, June 23rd and 24th, welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Tector.
From 10 to 5 for their annual arts and crafts show and farmers market. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Question. This annual event, I understand, is held here regularly and has been in the past, am I correct in that understanding?
That's my understanding, I think there's a letter in your packet. Do you have any questions on that?
No, I did not. I've been to the event before, I think it's a great event, and they've done it before, and I think we should continue it.
All right. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, for information only, First Selectmen appointment to the Economic Development Commission, Christopher LaSala, unaffiliated of 115 Somerset Avenue. Term is 11-11 through 11-16. All right, there's a resume in your packet if you're of interest. Next up, item number nine on the agenda, Superintendent Schools, to hear, consider and act upon a request from the Superintendent Schools to approve a lease for the property at 418 Meadow Street. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
For discussion purposes, second.
Okay. I believe in your packets, you have a memo from Assistant Town Attorney Cannelli, as well as a copy of the lease, and I believe these, so let's, any discussion? Do you want to start with that, or, let me ask this, would Dr. Title, anybody from your staff, or Eileen, would you like to make?
For the contract itself, Dr. Title and Mr. Fryer are here for any questions with regard to the property.
All right, do you have, do you want to intro us with any comments on that, or do you just want us to start with, because I know you wrote a memo summarizing this.
I don't know that I have anything to add to what I put in the memo, so perhaps to, however any questions you want.
I guess the first question I would have to, to Dr. Title, you've had a chance to review this, Central Office is okay with the terms and conditions and everything that's currently part of the lease?
Yeah, we're fine with this, we need the space, we're in the space, and we budget according to this lease.
Selectman McCarthy Vehi?
Through you, to First Selectmen or to Assistant Town Attorney Cannelli, the current lease, that, you're in the space, how long have you been there? When does, what's the term, the current lease?
Let's see. Attorney Cannelli, why don't you step up to the podium, so we can at least start addressing these through you, and.
The lease has been in effect for quite some time, Mr. Fryer's regulations, 2003, and that's approximately what I recall as well.
And that's the current lease?
Well, there's been a series of them, but the current lease would go back to, I believe, 2009. That was the most recent renewal.
Okay. And this is probably more properly directed to the Central Office, could you just tell us a little bit about the activities that take place there, and just what the space is used for? You said we need this, just tell us a little bit.
I'll let Dave.
Thank you.
He lives there.
This space is possibly 6,200 square.
Mr. Fryer, if you could just, your name and title for that?
Dave Fryer, I am the manager of facilities for the Board of Education here in Fairfield. The space is used by the maintenance department, which is myself, two supervisors, and a secretary. And it houses our shop, which is a wood shop, and any other repairs that we need to be made are made in this place, that can be made offsite of the schools. We house a lot of our everyday materials there, equipment, tools, you know, larger tools, we have storage of that. We have a multitude of plan storage and file storage for all the school plans and drawings that we receive on a regular basis for many projects that we do. It's also a storage space for an interim storage for things that are going out to the schools. We don't have any place to put them in the schools. So, for instance, we do all the filter changes at, you know, four times a year, we literally receive trailer truck full of filters in boxes, and we have to have someplace to put them, we take them to our shop and fill my place up, and then, you know, distribute them to the schools as we can, as they have space available. So this is the kind of thing that we have. We have some missile storage of pipes and fittings and those kind of things, separate rooms. The space is adequate, it's not ideal, but it's, right now, it's working for us. I think we have to realize we have, you know, there's other storage space that we do utilize, and one time we had hoped to put under one roof, and that was the Tunxus Hill, the old state barn that we use for storage of a lot of furniture. We have a central storage area, which we had hoped to abandon and use for other purposes, that's still being used by us. And my grounds crew, which is located down at One Ride Highway, is separate from us. There's things that we would love to consolidate, but, you know, that the process, and, you know, looking at some of the things we did before, we had planned to build, we looked at trying to build our own facility at One Ride Highway, where the land was available, but the cost of construction on that site was fairly high due to the materials in the ground. So we ended up with this spaces, which is probably about a third of what we originally were looking for, but it does serve the purpose right now for what we need it for, when we really need it. There's no other place to go at this point.
Do you have any questions on that?
Sure. What other spaces did you look at? Can you give me a list of the spots you guys also looked at, other than this space?
Well, at the time, when we moved into this particular space, and before we, well, before we moved in, we were looking at building a building, we looked at the Tunxus Hill spot, which was the old state garage that they abandoned, and I guess they turned over to the town. I know there was talk about the armory, Gold Manor or Gold Place, and what could happen to that, and rec. department, and we went back and forth with it, and that was decided was not going to be a place where we could go. Other than that, I don't recall looking at an awful lot of other spaces. The town had the land down at One Ride Highway, which we had hoped to build upon, and that didn't get done, and that's how we ended up with where we are now. Wasn't a lot available.
I'm sorry, cut off.
Well, I think actually, Selectman Walsh and I are kind of along the same lines. You mentioned the consolidation issue, and so two kind of questions is, you said the process is difficult in terms of consolidating, but what I'm wondering is, in terms of cost effectiveness, what makes sense? Does it make sense to look at consolidating? And along the lines of what Selectman Walsh asked, now, is this the best available price out there for real estate space right now, for an appropriate space?
I don't have an answer to that, that would be a Central Office decision, you know. We did try to look around the area, for instance, the old edge, the Fitness Edge, is abandoned, is empty property right now. There were some other properties down there, which were rather expensive, especially now with the train station, and I think that property's going to be out of sight. Other than that, I don't know what's, I really don't know, I haven't done a survey of any properties in Fairfield to see what might be available. This space is, you know, became of alley, and your predecessor, Mr. Flay, don't negotiate the leases, I recall, so all that, all that has been done, and that's all I know about it.
So, in terms of, I guess to follow up on the consolidation question, can you answer that piece of it as well? Have you?
Yeah, ideally, it would be nice to have everybody under one roof. We could have the grounds crew, which is, again, they're down at One Ride Highway, where they have a maintenance shop, and can work on the vehicles that we have down there. We have storage at Tunxus Hill, we could bring that into our house if it was large enough. And we have a lot of things stored at our central stores, Fairfield Ward High School underneath, that, you know, primarily, we tried to try to get rid of, and now we've got all of our, you know, materials for coastal supplies, and other storage items such as tiles, floor tiles, concrete mixes, and things of that sort, which we don't have any room for.
So, why is it that you haven't looked at consolidating everything? What are the specific reasons? What, you said the process is difficult, what?
The process of consolidating isn't difficult, you'd have to find a site to do it. And the price of going out and trying to buy a site for our own, I don't know, I've really never gotten involved with that. But I know at the time, when we looked at some other, we did look at some vacant properties on Commerce Drive, that at the time, they were more expensive than this lease, which was negotiated. So, you know, there were larger spaces, I mean, that's a consideration, too, how much the Board is willing to spend on a larger space. Our ideal would be to build our own on town property, but that didn't come to fruition.
Through you, Mr. Selectman, could I also hear from either Central Office or the Board of Ed, related to that, if there's anything else that.
Hi, David Title, Superintendent of Schools. Tim, give the history, because I think this happened before I got here. Clearly, in an ideal world, we'd love to have the town purchase a property and allow us to use it rent-free, rather than us budgeting, operating budget money for this kind of a space. Given the circumstances where we are, we're leasing property right now for our Charmant of High School, we're leasing property here, so we're budgeting this in our operating budget. If there were a rent-free space, or a large space where we could consolidate, we'd be all in favor of pursuing that, in conjunction with the town bodies. That could take quite a while to do, and while that's going on, this lease would be our next best option. So I'll let Tim talk about previous attempts, maybe, even know the history of it.
Tim Carey, Board of Ed, we looked at this fairly thoroughly about 20 months ago, 18, 20 months ago, through our facility subcommittee process. And one of the questions we had was, why are we spending, at the time when the economy was cratering, in excess of $13 a square foot, for light industrial or basically warehouse space? As Mr. Fryer indicated, what was presented to us is a desire to have somewhere in the ordinance of 15,000 to 20,000 square feet to do this consolidation, and bring everyone in the same space. The previous administration was adamant, however, that this was the best deal that we could get, and that this was the space we need to be in at the time, through multiple requests. They also mentioned that they'd offered us space on One Ride Highway, when we unwound that, the space was sub 1,000 square feet, and there was a desire to look at, and I, this is my recollection, so I'm going to have to check back with Mr. Cullen on this, but I believe it would cost upwards of $400,000 to do foundational work because of the site. So that was kind of discounted at that point to expand in that area. And there wasn't enough space to put everybody in the same place as the feedback we got. So, historically, the decision on where this type of space is seated here, was our understanding, and then we, through our operating budget, will pay for it if there isn't town-owned facilities. So, we were trying to trim our budget down as well, looking at this, and the answer we got at the time was that through the First Selectmen's Office review, there wasn't a better commercial site for us to be in.
Oh, you, I have other questions, but I'll.
Mr. Walsh? Mr. Tector, do you, is there any, have a file on this matter, from that you kind of inherited when you took over, in regards to what other spaces were looked at, if any other spaces were looked at, anything like that?
Not that I have, though, Mr. Hiller has his hands up, and it might be, we'll follow, listen to him.
That'd be great.
And while he's getting up there, let me just clarify, this was already kind of on the front burner when I, when I got here, it was one of several leases, we were looking at, if you will, finishing up the negotiation on and getting done. So, we didn't start it anew, from that standpoint. The goal, really, over the last six months, has been to finish this up. Mr. Hiller?
As Mr. Fryer indicated, when this lease was initiated, I wasn't certain of the year, but you say 2003, I think. We had done, my office had done some study on what possibilities existed, along with Mr. White's office, with two areas we focused on. First off, the possibility of building some space down in, on the town property, at the town garage. And that started to get pretty expensive at that time, as to the facility and the location within the perimeter of that, of that building. The closest we came at that time was a building on Commerce Drive, it's not immediately adjacent to where the post office is, but moving towards the Bridgeport line and towards the Mercedes dealership, there was a building in there that was available at the time that we did look at extensively, and looked at with the possibility of purchasing that. that. But it was deemed at that time this space was available and it worked. But there may be, there may be some analysis that was done. I'd have to do some digging. But those were the options going back eight or nine years ago when this space was first occupied.
It just appears to me that we're paying, we're starting off about $13.28 a square foot for warehouse slash light industrial. By the end of the lease, we're going up to $14.09 per square foot. That seems like a lot of money to be able to pay for this kind of space when, you know, you throw in a six, seven more dollars, you're getting office space in downtown Fairfield for just over $20 a square foot.
I think, you know, you'd have to check with Mr. Carey as to what analysis was done at that time or when they looked at it and to what else is out there. And also, I think one of the advantages of this space is it's reasonably centrally located, immediately adjacent. In fact, it borders I-95. And so it gives, you know, the ability to go out throughout the town because obviously there's a.
With a lot of the vacant space that's available in Bridgeport that you would be able to seem to, unless someone can tell me why you need an immediate spot right here in Fairfield, it seems to me you could almost save more than half of that cost on a yearly basis. Because there's so many vacant warehouse vacant places that are available in Bridgeport and can, I guess, Dr. Title, I guess I'll look to you on why this space is necessary here in Fairfield and how much, you know, whether it is needed in here in Fairfield or whether we can take advantage of, for your budgetary purposes, of a lot cheaper space.
We could be in Bridgeport. My concern would be, you'd want to be in Bridgeport in a space that's pretty close to the Fairfield line because we also don't need to have our guys spend a lot of time on trucks going to the other side of town. So, we'd be amenable to looking for space in Bridgeport. I mean, our preference would be to not pay rent at all. And, you know, I'd like to explore that as a possibility as well, if there's a way to consolidate some of this. But if that can't be done, and we want to look at other options, then Bridgeport, I think as long as it's close to the Fairfield line, is definitely an option we could live with. We also have to consider the cost of moving, you know, into a new space, but certainly if it's some, a nice space in Bridgeport, close to the line, we can definitely live with that.
The space that's at the Fairfield Theater Company that's not being used, how much space is there?
I'm not certain how much space is there. I think it's limited. There's, it's not, that space, I think you've got parking issues there because the advantage we got is you bring in, well, at least it doesn't.
Tractor trailers.
Well, they bring in tractor trailers and also employees who are parking there before they disperse. That was, that was one of the considerations we had because you probably have, what, 12?
16 people coming in.
16 people coming in early in the morning and parking their cars in an area that's already a little congested as far as parking.
But the benefits of that building are, number one, is that with the new Fairfield Metro Center, the state has to turn us over some number of spaces. And that supposedly they're doing the survey on that now to figure out how many spaces are going to be turned over to the town of Fairfield pursuant to the 2003 agreement. All this, all this parking, from what I understand, on the northbound side or the New Haven bound side that is owned by the state is going to be turned over to the town of Fairfield. Except for stuff that's leased, that they currently have leases on, like where they rent to spaces to the taxi places, where they rent spaces to Naughty Dolphin and whatever. And there's currently, I was on the understanding they were doing a survey to figure out how many spaces would be coming back to the town.
Almost. The spaces that are being leased are currently being leased by the Fairfield Parking Authority, though, so we started with that all of the state-owned spaces, including, and the parking authority is in essence leasing those spaces from the state. All of the state-owned spaces on the, what we call the south side of the tracks or the northbound side, as you referred to it, would come to the town. Based on our agreement with the state, going back to the 2003 agreement where we had to provide 1,500 spaces, we are currently negotiating with the state in terms of how much credit we get for all the spaces that are at the Metro Center at the moment and basically negotiating over how many of their design changes took away spaces, which certainly were no fault of ours. And again, the primary problem with the Metro Center space is it doesn't hold 1,500 spaces. But, so it looks like some number of spaces on the south side of the tracks, because of our contractual obligations, we would end up not taking from the state, if you would. More than likely, the spaces that the state retains, their goal is to provide commuter parking, so they would not be interested in retaining spaces that are currently leased to any of the businesses. One of the objectives that's been mentioned in prior discussions has been for the spaces on the south side of the tracks that the town does obtain, might be to work on an arrangement with local business is for employee parking to free up more downtown spaces for shoppers overall, intending to help the commuters. So, that's kind of where that stands. The biggest problem with the FTC space, the Fairfield Theater Company space, one is that's a pretty narrow driveway, pretty narrow parking lot. Those cars are in there. It's access to that space, which is, having walked through that just recently, is somewhat difficult to get, certainly if you're talking the number of cars, and I assume some trucks, that the central office requirement would be. So I'm not sure that would make the most sense without getting into the fact that that's basically open warehouse space at the moment. It may need some cost and some fit up beyond that.
Do we have any ATC for one thing? No, that's basically only the ATC.
You'll only be there for a while, right? No, yes, we would need, we would need.
It'd be a tough day today, isn't it?
How many square feet are there in that section that's not being used?
I don't know.
To me, it seems like it's several thousand square feet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an exact number. You're probably not that far off. It's definitely more than 1,000 square feet. I don't know if it's 6,000 square feet. That seems like a little large at this point.
Well, I'd like to get an answer on how much space is not being used in that space now because the intended use the Fairfield Theater Company had when that agreement was signed was to expand into that space, and that seemed nowhere near fruition. So, since that's a town-owned building, we should probably consider what, what our facility is and what possible uses, not, I mean, not just for this, but for other purposes.
No question. I think the issue here is not so much, it's one part the space, one part the fit up, but one part the access.
Yeah.
What we're talking about is we don't, you don't have vehicle access to that space on the same basis that they would need it. Because that's a relatively small parking space and all the parking spaces around that are either taxi, Naughty Dolphin, or commuter. But that being said, even if not for this application, it does make sense to.
And the good thing about the Fairfield Theater space is that the spaces aren't being used during the day technically for the Fairfield Theater Company. I mean, their staff is, what, two people?
I think closer, I think a lot closer to 15 to 18.
Fairfield Theater Company is 18 people in there working during the day?
Between full-time and part-time people. I don't know if they're there all the hours every day, but I also haven't driven by that space and seen it empty either.
All right, might be worth finding out just to take advantage of that asset and find out how many people are there during the day because they do have a parking lot that's dedicated to them. But that doesn't get away from the question of whether this lease, just for staying there, without any evidence that we've really looked at any other spaces other than the couple of spots that were mentioned, we haven't checked out any of the rents or engaged a broker to see if there's anything that we can get for less money. So I'm not inclined to vote on this at this point in time until we get some evidence that, you know, there's just nothing around that's within drive, a reasonable driving distance that we can't get for much less money in this economy.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, my initial question's about, is this the cheapest space available? And I understand that we have access considerations and the ideal of consolidation, but right now, real estate's a fluid thing, so what's out there that we can get at the best possible price? And I don't know that we've done that comparison for current conditions. And I think we need to.
All right. Is there a motion on the table?
Let me follow that up with a question. I think the current lease goes through July of 2012. It is at a higher rate for this year. So, the question would be, if we choose, if we choose not to vote on this tonight or this afternoon, this evening, what then happens in the process with the current lease?
Well, the current lease will remain in effect until this coming July. As of now, my understanding is the landlord has been charging the lower rent on the property because he, on the assumption that since it was a lower rent than before, very likely this would be passed. Whether he would then ask for increase back to the original rental amount or not, I'm not sure. But I could certainly ask him.
Just to follow on that, is there any critical date? Do we have to give notice at any point?
I don't, well, there probably is some date at which it has to be, but I don't believe we're at a critical date at this time.
Could you, could you find out if there are any critical dates along those lines and notify the board back to that? Then, Mr. Fryer, if I could. In terms of your organization and functionality, what's, what's the kind of lead time you would need to have if you were going to move to another space? 30 days enough notice, 60 days notice? How much, how long would it take you to affect that move?
I think that would be dependent upon what space we're going to, what kind of build outs we'd have to do there. If there's existing office space, that's great. If we had to build our own, which we did in this particular space, we'd need a little more time. I would think 60 days is adequate to do the minimal work that we'd need to do to put up some stud and sheet rock walls if that was the case. Moving, we can get our own people to probably do that or a little help from a mover, but we could.
Then, to help make an informed decision for this board, can you get us an estimate of what it might cost to move? I realize fit up might not be part of that and not depend entirely on the space.
Yes.
You're saying it'd take about 60, based on the space, if we estimated 60 days for fit up? That means we're looking for space that's available as of May 1st.
I would think we could do that, yeah.
Right, because if it was available as of June 1st, we wouldn't have time to do our 60 days worth of fit up in order to get out of where we are.
Even if we couldn't finish all the fit up inside, we could probably live with that as we're doing it. I could even use my inside people to do that. We have carpenters, we have electricians, we have plumbers. We could probably do some of that ourselves, depending what the building, you know, gives us.
And if you would just think through that process and see if there's any other critical issues that might have to be addressed or have a cost impact if we were to affect a move. So, one issue is the cost of a new lease and what that might be able to affect? The functionality of the space, what the fit up is, and then the cost of your moving. Can anyone think of any other cost issues that might be included as part of this decision?
Anything I can think of, that would be the computers, phones, and those kind of things. I think that's enough lead time, but I really don't know the answer to that because I don't do that stuff.
And just, sorry, just to be clear, that the number we're talking about, is that triple net or is that inclusive of heat and light? I know it says it on here, forgive me, I just don't remember off the top.
We're not, we're simply paying gross rent. We're not paying in addition to that taxes and so on.
What about heat, light, electrical?
We do pay separately for that, I believe, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
No problem. I don't know whether Dr. Title's best of justice or Mr. Fryer. How much money do we have invested in the current fit up? You said we had to do work where we currently are. How much did that cost? Like, how much do we have invested into this building that we currently are at?
I don't recall the figures, but it's not an awful lot of money. Again, we did, we did the work with our own people inside, so it's material cost, and it was stud and sheet rock walls. We didn't have to do any plumbing that was there. So it's probably pretty minor. I don't think we're in debt, in big money for that.
Along the same lines, could you write up some rough specs or criteria in terms of space you'd be looking for?
I have to.
Okay, so if you could get that out. And then, Dr. Title, perhaps you and I can talk offline as to, and I suspect it's your team taking a lead in terms of perhaps looking at alternative space out there to see if there's anything that fits what your needs are.
Right, that would be fine. Happy to work on that. It's a question of whether we're looking for space simply to replicate this existing space, whether we're looking for a more consolidated space, whether we're looking for something that might be a rental, whether it's something that might be available for purchase. We're open to all those options. So, we have to move some timely fashion on this, and I believe any of such lease needs to move along to other town bodies here. So, we just need to make sure we meet the deadlines that were outlined.
Thank you. Attorney Canal, I think that the lease issues, the approval process, is the Board of Selectmen and the RTM?
Correct.
All right, so as long as our body is flexible in terms of how we might meet, we can probably hit the RTM deadlines as appropriate.
Yes, I would think so.
Okay. And then, Dr. Title, would, are you okay in taking a lead on exploring some space options here?
That's fine. We'll be, you know, we'll connect.
And let's talk, so if there's any, any help on this side, we need to do it. And let's see how much progress we can make on that in the next.
And we'll look at our files on prior attempts. If there's some difficulty in finding documentation at your end, we'll see what we have in our office to see what ground has already been plowed on this thing. Happy to.
Yeah, I would think.
Happy to plow ahead on this. I just, you know, this is one of those things, as you said, that had been in the works for a while, and we need some closure on it.
Yeah, I would think an experienced commercial broker, especially on this market, could very quickly enumerate the rental options versus the purchase options that are out there currently.
Right, we do not have any plan in our long-range facilities plan that goes through 2015 for purchasing of a property for this purpose. The board has not anticipated expending any money for a purchase on this. So if there's going to be a purchase, that would have to be done some other way.
Well, it's, I think the first thing to do is explore what's out there.
Yeah.
If there's a lease option, might be if there's a purchase option, perhaps we look at whether we can fast-track that enough to accomplish that or perhaps not.
Okay.
And lastly, you know, that, just so we can make an informed decision, has been pointed out about cost versus staying and executing this lease versus moving, and is there enough to be gained?
Okay.
By looking at that.
We're happy to research it with you.
Okay. Given that, oh, sorry.
Just to that end, costs, if I recall correctly in the lease, we have to restore the current building back to its original condition. Am I correct? And what would the cost of that be as well? Am I, since we did some?
If we had to go back to what it looked like when we took the building, it wouldn't be much of a demo cost. A lot of stuff was there. We kind of put walls in between walls to make our office spaces. So I don't think that's a large consideration at all. In-house, we could do that.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Any motions? The Chair would entertain a motion to postpone for the next.
To date certain?
Certain, next meeting to kick this evaluation period off.
I think the question is, in terms of making a motion, is the next meeting timing-wise, will that provide enough time? Do we want to put it before us then and then see if enough information has been gathered?
I guess I'd be willing to entertain, adjourn it to the, I don't know if the next meeting might be too soon, but two meetings from now, our February meeting. I'd give them 30 days to try to see what they can.
As rule, as a point of order, if I can ask the Assistant Town Attorney, can we postpone it to a date certain past the next meeting or is the next meeting?
Given the fact that you don't have any special rules that allow you to go past the next meeting, Roberts would say you can only postpone it one meeting.
All right, then it, based on that, what I'd suggest is let's postpone it to the next meeting if that's acceptable to.
That's fine.
And then, if we need to postpone it again, we can do that. So if we don't make enough progress in 30 days, or based on what we learn in 30 days, it shouldn't take more than 30 days to evaluate rental options out there. I don't believe there's 150 options. There's probably three or four and those could be scoped out pretty quick, I would think.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with doing it to the next meeting. I just don't want them to feel rushed and not be able to answer questions again just because they feel some rush to have it on at the late January meeting. So, I mean, if they need more time, they should take the full amount of time that they need and readjourn it again.
We can postpone it again. We can postpone it again. But yes, we can, we can certainly postpone it again easy enough if the information isn't available.
Sure.
Or there are significant questions. So, we have a.
I have a motion to postpone.
To a date certain?
Date certain, that being the date of our next Board of Selectment meeting, which, Jen, do you have that date? The eighteenth of January.
Does it have to be the next one? It's not thirty days? Can't get.
She just said it had to be our next meeting.
Next meeting.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's not enough, yeah.
That's why.
Okay, I just, for purposes of keeping it moving, let's postpone it. I'm, I'm okay with postponing it then, even though I have, don't believe we're going to have enough by then.
Yeah, second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, just if they don't know, they should probably just give us something, memo, saying they, they need more time, and we'll postpone it again. They have to show up.
All right. Any comment from the public on the postponement? All right, back to the board. You ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up. Next up, item ten, to hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Director of Public Works that the town of Fairfield enter into a municipal energy opportunities agreement with United Illuminating Company. And furthermore, the First Elect can be authorized to execute the required documents in order to participate in the energy conservation program called Energy Opportunities. It's my understanding that we did not get the agreement distributed out in time that we'd be looking at. So, it, as much as there's a summer here, I would entertain a motion to postpone this to a date certain be our next meeting, and we can have that agreement out in time for us to review before having to, to vote on it.
So moved to postpone.
Pardon me, Mr. First Elect?
Yeah?
I, I did check with Mr. Bowman, and that agreement does need to get back to UI by next Thursday. I would be happy to make sure you have a copy of it by tomorrow, if you were willing to entertain a, a special meeting next week.
Can we do a postponement motion to a date to be specified, a special meeting next week? How do we do that?
Never run into that question before, but I don't see why not, why you couldn't specify the true postponement to a special meeting to be held next Thursday.
Looking at my colleagues, would next Wednesday be a possible?
I believe so.
I believe so.
Okay. Check my calendar. Jen, Wednesday afternoon, look, recently clear?
I can't remember offhand.
That would be the eleventh?
I'm hoping this would not be lengthy. This is actually a very good program that saves the town money, so hopefully it wouldn't take too long to review it.
Yeah, we think it's more of an administrative issue, and if we can get the agreement out well ahead of time?
I, I will make sure if Lauren doesn't have it, that she gets it and can get it out to you, hopefully within the next day or so.
Why don't we plan on a meeting next?
On the eleventh?
Okay. Okay, so if we can move to postpone this to next Wednesday, the eleventh, for a special meeting, and we'll get notice out on that in plenty of time. We'll get the documentation out on that in plenty of time, so hopefully that can be a fairly quick meeting, and I thank you for your flexibility on that. Do we have, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Just to clarify, is, your motion was to a date certain, or to a special meeting next week?
To a date certain at the special meeting to be held next week, on January eleventh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next up, item eleven, discussion and report on supplemental report of special counsel concerning Metro Center contracts. Attorney Vitarelli, I believe you have a presentation on this.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Did you guys get the, did you get a copy of the, Kristen, did you get a copy of the PowerPoint? These were just run off. This is his, this is what he discussed. Benny would like a copy of the PowerPoint? There are some additions right there. Does he need a copy of the binding letter?
You all seen?
It's not, I don't believe it's in there.
Oh, it's not?
Kristen, in case you need a copy.
Back to several?
All right, are we ready to proceed? Attorney Vitarelli, thank you for joining us today. Thank you for the presentation, and we'll turn the floor over to you for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen. I'm here tonight to provide a supplemental report to the town concerning our legal analysis of the train station project. And with that, let me just go through and tell you why we did this project. Our first slide is relatively self-explanatory, but our original report concluded that the binding letter agreement, or the binding letter, as it's called in, in our materials, was not submitted to any town body. If folks recall, the binding letter agreement was an agreement that provided revenue sharing for proceeds from the commuter parking area.
And.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vitarelli, if I might, for anybody who would like a copy of what's being referred to as the binding letter agreement, there are extras up here on the desk in the paperclip file. It's been handed out previously at other meetings, as well as part of the sixty-five to seventy-eight questions last summer, but. All right, thank you.
So, by, by way of review, the binding letter agreement was an agreement that was intended to modify section four point three of the two thousand and three tripartite agreement that was entered into for the construction project originally. And this agreement was intended by, it was signed by, by former First Electman Flato and the Connecticut Commissioner of DOT, the acting commissioner at the time. And the letter essentially revised the formula by which the town would receive a share of parking revenues from the commuter parking area. Originally, the way the formula was to work was the state was going to, the state was going to operate a commuter parking area, and it was going to be able to take a credit on revenues against its operating and maintenance expenses on the, on, on the surface parking area. The town would be able to get, once the state had taken its operating and maintenance costs for operating the, the parking area, it was going to be able to pay it to the town up to three hundred thousand dollars per year, up to a twenty-year period from the time that the parking lot started to be used by commuters. So, it wasn't absolute that the money was going to come in. It was not necessarily going to last, it'd be twenty years of revenue to the town, but that was the original formula. And in our original report, we had, had explained that the binding letter agreement was a document signed by Mr. Flato and the Commissioner of DOT in the spring of two thousand and ten. And what it did was it revised the formula so that not only would the operating and maintenance costs be considered and, and taken by the state in, in the initial revenues from the parking area, but also up to a million dollars per year in debt service that the state had incurred in the, in procuring the nineteen point four million dollars that would be made available to the town. And in our report, we also had explained that the binding letter agreement, which many of you have received today here, we have copies available, was never disclosed to anyone besides former First Electman Flato and Town Attorney Saxel until sometime in mid-two thousand and eleven. Obviously, the state, DOT, had a copy of it, but folks in the town were not provided with copies of it. When they were provided with copies of the two other main documents in two thousand and ten, namely, the agreement with Black Rock Realty, which has been termed the closing letter, and the State-Town Agreement, which was the general agreement with the State of Connecticut in two thousand and ten that provided for additional financing from the state, the nineteen point four million, in, in exchange for the, the town taking on additional obligations. So, that was sort of the basic premise of where the binding letter appeared in our initial report. Originally, when we did our report, we were asked by the town to look at the documentation that related to the three contracts that we reviewed, namely, the two thousand and ten contracts, which included the binding letter agreement. And we were provided with information that was compiled by attorney, Town Attorney, Mr. Saxel, to, to our firm to provide the analysis. So, we looked at those documents. Ultimately, we got a copy of the binding letter agreement from the town, and it's, it's significant only so far as it explains why we did a supplemental analysis. Now, again, I'm giving you sort of another summary of the binding letter agreement in our PowerPoint. The town will make available my PowerPoint for those who aren't able to be here today to see it. But essentially, I've just recast what I explained about the, about the binding letter agreement. Notably, the binding letter agreement, although it was signed in the spring of two thousand and ten, was not provided to any other town officials, to our knowledge, until sometime in mid-two thousand and eleven, when the current First Electman Tetro and others had, had been discussing issues involving the Metro Center project, and the document was then disclosed by Attorney Saxel. Our supplemental analysis takes into account some, some facts. The reason why it came about was we, we had learned about a letter this November thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, that had been sent by Attorney Saxel to Denise Radosovich, who is an attorney of the Connecticut Department of Transportation relating to the enforceability of the binding letter agreement. Notably, the letter, the letter was dated July fifteenth, two thousand and ten. No one at the town had received a copy of this letter to the state until November thirtieth of this year. And, and essentially, the, the relevant facts are listed here in the PowerPoint. There was a formal opinion letter provided by Attorney Saxel, and signed by, by former Town Attorney Saxel, that stated for, for the benefit of the Connecticut Department of Transportation that the binding letter was enforceable. The letter itself, once we got a copy of it, carbon copied the Board of Selectmen members, who would have been Board of Selectmen members at the time, that is, July fifteenth, two thousand and ten, thereabouts. At that time, there were members Stenick and Walsh, in addition to Mr. Flato. The July fifteenth letter was not provided to our firm as part of the documents relating to the analysis, although it did bear specifically on legality and enforceability of the binding letter agreement as per Attorney Saxel at the time that that July fifteenth letter was drafted. It was meant to address concerns about that. And again, I've explained that it came to light in, in late, late last year, and it was, really spurred our analysis and the reason for part of our supplemental report. We also received a copy of, of the July fifteenth, two thousand and ten, letter from Condat's Legal Counsel in negotiations for additional state funding to complete the, the Metro Center project. So, what was the purpose of our supplemental analysis? Well, originally, we were asked by the town to continue our analysis regarding the binding letter agreement, and to determine whether the agreement was void, insofar as it was not approved by the town bodies that we said necessarily required approval. So, that was the original scope. Upon learning of the July fifteenth, two thousand and ten, letter, and subsequently receiving some correspondence from Attorney Saxel and Mr. Flato, we were asked by the Board of Selectmen to look not only at whether or not the binding letter agreement is void, but look at the context and circumstances of the July fifteenth, two thousand and ten, letter, and confirm that the letter was not, in fact, distributed to the Board of Selectmen members back in two thousand and ten, and to undersigned counsel in the town in two thousand and eleven. So, that was really the scope of our analysis, and to see whether or not the facts that the letter had not been disclosed somehow influenced whether the binding letter agreement was enforceable vis-à-vis the state. The July fifteenth letter, for those of you who have seen a copy of the packet that we had sent out, it was a, a letter of ours dated December thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, which in more narrative format, for those who are more interested in some of the details themselves, can look at the document. We've attached a copy of the July fifteenth letter that I've been referring to as Exhibit One to our, our, our December thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, letter. Essentially, the historical background of the July fifteenth letter was this. In May and June, late, late May, early June of two thousand and ten, Condat's attorney, and, and we've also inferred that to be Condat itself, had concerns about the town's authority to enter the binding letter agreement. The binding letter agreement, as I said before, was signed by the Deputy Commissioner, DOT, and was signed by Mr. Flato back in the spring of two thousand and ten. The July fifteenth, two thousand and ten, letter was not the first letter from the Town Attorney to DOT addressing the issues of enforceability. In our investigation, we found that there were two earlier letters, also appended to our December thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, letter, which is available for the public, that addressed the issues of the enforceability of the binding letter agreement. Based upon our investigation into the matter, the earlier letters, that is, the June seventh and June tenth, two thousand and ten, letters, were not adequate from the state's vantage point, Condat's vantage point, to give them the level of comfort they needed to determine that the binding letter agreement was enforceable. And so, the July fifteenth letter came about. We learned both from a written correspondence from Attorney Saxel, also included in the packet of information we've attached to our December thirtieth, letter, was that the July fifteenth, letter, to give the state the comfort it needed, was drafted in substantial part by the Condat attorney, Denise Radosovich. And it included references to, to a review of the binding letter agreement's terms by the RTM, and also included in the letter itself that the state helped draft, or suggested language, specific language, had carbon copies of the Board of Selectmen members. The letter included a statement by Attorney Saxel acknowledging the state's expressed reliance on that letter, the July fifteenth, letter, in distributing the nineteen point four million. And to give you a little bit more factual backdrop of why July fifteenth, two thousand and ten, was important, if you, if you recall, the agreements, the three agreements that we reviewed for our initial report in two thousand and ten, the agreement with Black Rock, we call the closing letter, the State-Town Agreement with the state, and the binding letter agreement that we're talking about today, were all signed before May fifth, two thousand and ten. May fifth, two thousand and ten, there was a Board of Selectmen meeting in which Attorney Saxel made a presentation, and Mr. Flato made a presentation, and a resolution was approved at that meeting that affirmed the town's entering into the main agreements with Black Rock, the closing letter, and the State-Town Agreement with the state. Okay? At that point in time, those two agreements had been, had been ratified or approved by the Board of Selectmen. In our original report, we found that wasn't enough. Our conclusion was that may not have been enough to get approval under the town charter, as we interpreted it. But the binding letter agreement was never provided on May fifth. The reason why July fifteenth was important is, between May fifth and July fifteenth, the town was getting involved in the process of seeking to have a general contractor construct the project. So, there was a bid process that went, went through, and the bids was to be awarded in July, in or about the fifteenth or sixteenth of July of two thousand and ten. So, the state, knowing that the town was going to spend money, that the state was going to make available to it pursuant to the State-Town Agreement, wanted to have assurances that the binding letter agreement was approved so that there would be no question at some point later on, from the state's vantage point, or in their view, the town's vantage point, that that binding letter agreement regarding the changed formula for the revenue sharing was valid. So, in June, beginning in June, early part of June, there were the two letters, the June seventh, letter, and the June tenth, letter, which were sent by Attorney Saxel to try to address concerns of the state that the binding letter agreement was approved in accordance with town charter and state law. Those earlier letters were small, were, were simpler, shorter, to the point more conclusory in nature. The July fifteenth, letter was drafted the day before the bid was to be awarded, or days before the bid was to be awarded. I understand it was, from what I understand, the bid was to be awarded to the successful bidder on or about the sixteenth of July of two thousand and ten. And so, between, beginning of June, when the first two letters were done, there were some continuing discussions that culminated in the July fifteenth, letter, that contained the factual assertions that you'll see in your packet today regarding the fact that this was, and I'll, I'll walk you through some of the factual assertions. One of them, most significantly, was that the representative town meeting had been briefed in the question and answer period about the change in the revenue sharing formula. The letter included a statement by Attorney Saxel, again, to provide the state with comfort in the form of an opinion letter, that he acknowledged on behalf of the town, as the town's attorney, that the state was relying upon his letter regarding the enforceability of the binding letter agreement. And so, that was to give the state, again, the state helped to write that letter, enough comfort so that they would be willing to allow the town to contract with the winning, winning bidder, and would allow the town to obligate itself to pay the money that the state was to provide the town. According to Attorney Saxel, in a letter that he wrote to the Board of Selectmen, it was, it was made available, I believe after the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, if I'm correct, that, the letter essentially said that the July fifteenth, letter was hastily drafted and signed by him so as not to delay the awarding of construction bids. by him so as not to delay the awarding of construction bids. And that letter's in your packet as well. Well, the letter was never distributed to the Board of Selectmen, and is part of our, you know, continuing investigation into the issues. We had contacted, I've talked to both Attorney Sacksel and to Mr. Flato. The letter was not distributed to the Board of Selectmen. It was factually inaccurate, particularly with respect to the statement that the binding letter agreement and the revised parking revenue-sharing formula was presented and discussed during the question-and-answer period at the RTM meeting. So that is fundamentally why the letter was not distributed. There was a factual error in the letter that was supplied to the state on or about July 15th, 2010. Mr. Flato contends, and in our written document, we go into some more detail, that he did not see the July 15th, 2010, letter from Attorney Sacksel to Attorney Redosevich at DOT, prior to it going out to Attorney Redosevich. But he very quickly thereafter, once it was sent, received copies that he was to distribute to the Board of Selectmen at the time, and observed that there was an error in the document, particularly with respect to the RTM discussion that was referenced in the letter. And that RTM reference, again, was put in there by Attorney Redosevich, DOT. To put a finer point on the discussions, Mr. Flato and Attorney Sacksel actually discussed the factual inaccuracy within a day or two of the July 15th. And it was confirmed for me by both that neither of them notified Condat or any other person within the town of the error in the letter. So even though this was, the letter was written by Attorney Redosevich, it contained a reference to the RTM meeting, the factual accuracy was not corrected with the state. Attorney Sacksel suggested that the letter was not distributed because of the inaccuracy, and I take that directly from the December 7th letter he wrote to this board, and also our conversation. He claims that he was not instructed by Mr. Flato to correct the inaccuracy or alert Condat of the inaccuracy. I asked Mr. Flato, you know, to tell us whether or not he was aware of whether the town, through Attorney Sacksel or his office, had alerted Condat of the inaccuracy. He confirmed that neither had. And Mr. Flato explained to me that Attorney Sacksel knew the letter would raise some questions, since the binding letter agreement had not been disclosed in July 2010. The July 2010, letter was never provided to town officials or special counsel in 2011. And, again, I talked previously in my previous slide about whether it was supplied to the Board of Selectmen, even though the letter itself has carbon copied the Board of Selectmen. The reasons, I just described, were the reasons why it was not distributed, according to Attorney Sacksel and Mr. Flato. The July 15th letter was never provided to us as well. Mr. Sacksel said it was an oversight. He had forgotten about the letter. And both had told me in discussions that they were satisfied that Mr. Flato had had authority pursuant to the 2003 bond resolution to enter into the binding letter agreement pursuant to the 2003 bonding resolution. That was essentially what they had told us during the investigation originally. With this factual backdrop, as well as the other information that we had available to us in our initial analysis of documents and discussions with town officials, we were asked the question, is the binding letter agreement void? Void meaning not, something that we could say is not a valid agreement, something that we can challenge the state on. Well, we had concluded before, and our conclusions from the original report are not disturbed by the additional information that we have received, that the binding letter agreement was not approved according to town charter and statute. It didn't follow the formal approval process that should have been followed. We still stand by that conclusion. We also find that, again, based upon this information, including the fact that no one had seen the July 15th, 2010, letter, and we also confirmed the binding letter agreement, were never submitted or even disclosed to required town boards, and cannot be deemed to be ratified. If you recall, my partner, Mr. Fisher, had talked about whether the other, the closing letter, which was the agreement with Blackrock in 2010, and the state-town agreement, whether those documents would have been enforceable. And our conclusion was that those had been provided to the various boards and commissions in 2010, very quickly after the May 5th Board of Selectmen meeting. And because of that, they were provided to those boards, and having gone down almost a year later and having almost a completed project, it was our view that those agreements are enforceable at this point, because the project's almost completed and the boards had knowledge of those documents beforehand. The binding letter agreement was not submitted in the same manner. But the additional information that we discovered as part of our supplemental investigation is significant, and it's significant on the issues of whether or not this binding letter agreement is enforceable or whether it's void. In a deal like this one, the state had exercised diligence to get some level of comfort that the town had followed the appropriate process in approving the binding letter agreement. And they went to the person who you would typically go to, which is the town's corporation councilor, town attorney. And so there were efforts, you know, three letters that we have from June and July of 2010, in which the state exercised diligence to get a formal opinion letter upon which it was, within the terms of that July 15th, letter, acknowledged to be relying upon in allowing the town to spend against the $19.4 million that the state was going to make available to it. We do have the issue, however, that the town attorney and former First Electman did not correct the inaccurate factual representation concerning RTM review. And, again, we did find significant, with respect to the first agreements, that they had been disclosed to the various boards. In this case, this had not been disclosed to the RTM, but DOT obviously thought it was important to have at least some mention in the letter that the binding letter agreement had been provided to the RTM or discussed, or at least the revenue-sharing portion, which is significant from the binding letter agreement, had been shared and discussed by the RTM. But that factual inaccuracy was not corrected. And we also find that the Board of Selectmen did not have the benefit of seeing the binding letter agreement either. But Condat does have a strong argument, in a compelling argument, that it reasonably relied upon Attorney Sacksel's letter. It didn't know necessarily that it hadn't been distributed. It had exercised diligence to get the language that it needed, to get the comfort that it needed in the letter, and from the state's vantage point, it accepted the facts as true, both the RTM reference and also the fact that it had been supplied to the Board of Selectmen. At this point, too, factually speaking, we are at a point where construction on the project is almost complete. The state's still working to reimburse the town for actual construction costs that were expended on the project and that are to be reimbursed, but we haven't gotten all the money yet, from what I understand. There's also additional state money that was recently authorized by the state to be used on the project and in furtherance of construction on the project to get it open. And our last bullet point here on this 11th slide is, and I'll read it, is there's little doubt that the state has provided this additional funding to the town on the expectation that the town will comply with the binding letter agreement regarding the revenue-sharing formula, as well as the state-town agreement and the closing letter. So there is a point you get to where you realize the state would not have proceeded forward on a lot of these things, including, most recently, with the additional funding, had they not believed this binding letter agreement was enforceable. So those are the formal parts of our report. And what I'll do, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I'll allow you to open the floor for questions or ask me any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Flato. Any questions from the board at this point? If you'd like to start, or I've got just a couple of factual points to verify, if you would. From your report, the, and I'm looking at page 2 of your December 30 report.
Yes.
Last paragraph, Attorney Sacksel further explains considerable pressure to put this issue to rest yet again. I hastily reviewed, printed out, signed, faxed the July 15th, letter to Denise. After it was sent, I gave it to Flato for distribution. In retrospect, I note that my letter contains an error which may explain why it was not given to the Board of Selectmen. So basically, both the First Electman at the time and the town attorney are saying they didn't distribute this to anyone else.
That's correct.
That's in their words.
That's correct.
On the next page, page 3, Attorney, item 2, point 2, Attorney Sacksel verified he had not copied the Board of Selectmen members, specifically members Walsh and Stenick, on the July 15th, letter. He indicated that he sent the letter to former First Electman Flato, who said he would distribute And then, did Attorney Flato, or First Electman Flato, at some point indicate whether he distributed it or not, or why he didn't distribute it?
Yes. If you look at the next page, and let's go forward, maybe two pages forward. Thanks, Mr. Walsh. Appreciate it. Yes, he did say, he did confirm for me, that the letter had not been circulated, and that he said that he and Attorney Sacksel had agreed that it not be circulated in light of the factual inaccuracies.
Okay, so that's at the end of paragraph 1 there.
Yep.
Mr. Flato confirmed he did not provide the binding letter to any other member of the Board of Selectmen or to any town board until he provided a copy of the binding letter agreement.
In or about May of 2011, and I did speak with former Selectwoman Stenick, and she said she had not received a copy of this thing until it was received from the Board of Selectmen, from you, actually.
Yeah.
Sometime after July of this year.
Just to correct or confirm for the record, the first time the binding letter of agreement came to light was late June, when Attorney Sacksel provided it to, actually, our project team, when we're reviewing the contract and looking for what had happened to the parking revenue. And he put it on the table at that point, and had, so that was the late June when we first saw that, and it hadn't been mentioned to anybody or shown to anybody, to my knowledge, prior to that, and certainly not to Selectman Stenick, because I sent her a copy of it, asking her if she'd seen it before, and she had not at that point. I am, maybe I didn't ask that question correctly. What I'm trying to do is, the letters were not distributed to the Board of Selectmen. Was it explained why? That's what I'm looking for, is where did it explain why they were not?
Well, the, Mr. Flato explained to me that he and Mr. Sacksel had discussed the factual inaccuracy and decided not to disclose the document to the Board of Selectmen, because it was factually inaccurate.
All right, so they're basically saying at that point that they both talked about it, they both realized it was inaccurate, they both decided not to share it with the Board of Selectmen. And did they talk in there about that they both decided also not to contact Condat and not to correct it at that point?
There was a slight dispute between the two in terms of, Attorney Sacksel said that he had not been instructed to make correction of the fact to Attorney Redosevich at Condat. Attorney Flato originally had told me in my discussions with him that he believed that he had offered to call the DOT Commissioner to explain, or the acting commissioner at the time, to explain the error, and that he had asked him to correct the letter, but later called me back and left me a voice message in which he told me that that may not be accurate. His recollection on further reflection was that he had assumed that Attorney Sacksel would have made a correction of the record.
Okay, so that's paragraph 3 on page 6, where he confirms that he offered to contact the Condat Commissioner, explain the error, and then confirmed he never actually made that contact, and never explained the error to the Commissioner.
Correct.
And then if I go to page 7.
Yes.
Attorney Sacksel's July 15th, letter states that the binding letter would be appended to the binding letter agreement, to the state-town agreement, or the town's appending the binding letter to the state-town agreement. Did either one address why they didn't append it, why it wasn't part of the packet that was handed out? When the contract was reviewed by the Board of Selectmen, as I'm reading this, in May of 2010, the binding letter was not part of that packet.
Correct.
Did either one explain why they didn't append it and why it wasn't part of that packet?
Yes, the best of my recollection, when I spoke with Attorney, when I spoke with Mr. Flato, he explained that he wanted the main agreements to be provided to the Board of Selectmen for review, and did not append each and every easement or conveyance or other related document to those documents, wanted them to focus on the main parts of the two agreements, namely, the closing agreement and the state-town agreement.
So that was an intentional omission of the binding letter from the May 2010 packet?
That's, my understanding was that that, as well as some other documents, were not included. Intentional.
I've got other questions, but I will defer those till later. Would anybody else like to follow up with some questions? Christian?
Sure. All right. We're heading into the May 5th, 2010, Board of Selectmen meeting, where the state agreement's going to be signed for the $19.4 million.
Correct.
All this has to be kind of put in, I guess, into reference, because I was at that meeting, but I wasn't made a Board of Selectmen member until the end of the meeting. Instead, the decision was made by the former First Electman, that despite the fact that we're having one of the biggest agreements ever signed in the state's history, to get $19.4 million, to finally get this project off the ground, but we'll swear in the new selectmen after the agreement. Okay? But then, this agreement, which was supposed to be appended to the binding letter agreement, which basically takes away $6 million worth of revenue from the town, is not attached to that, correct? So when Selectman Stenick sees it, she has no idea, right, about this?
Yeah, to answer the question, the binding letter agreement was not attached to the packet of information provided to the Board of Selectmen members, including Selectman Stenick, on May 5th, 2010.
Okay, so First Electman Tetra knows about it, I mean, First Electman, sorry, Flato knows about it, because he signed it already, right?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Sacksel was making the presentation to the Board of Selectmen, which is a two-member Board of Selectmen at that time, knows about it.
Correct.
Correct? But no disclosure to any other bodies at that point in time, and we're led to believe that, and we're told, and we actually know from talking to Cherry, that she's voting on something and not knowing that we're losing $6 million worth of parking revenue pursuant to this binding letter agreement?
She was not aware of the binding letter agreement on the May 5th vote, based on my investigation.
And so she's voting on something without having full knowledge of what the new transaction is, and then will swear me in. So I can't ask any questions about it at the time. All right. So then we go from there. And we get into June, and the state's starting to get ready for their funding and getting ready to sign the contracts with Carrera, correct?
That's correct.
And they first ask.
Not the state, but the town.
The town.
Correct.
The town's getting ready to sign with Carrera, and the state's going to have to start making payments and start having to put money up, correct, at this point in time? Getting close to putting money up?
Yeah, that's the next step before the state would be obligated to put money up.
Okay. And your analysis is basically that they're coming to Attorney Sacksel, because they're trying to possibly tie the binding letter agreement into the state agreement for the $19.4 million, because it's not attached?
I'm not sure. I think the state obviously knew about the binding letter agreement. The state was concerned specifically about the enforceability of the binding letter agreement at that time. Whether it was attached or not, the state was concerned about it.
And just to clarify, based on further discussions we had with the state when they, actually, November 28th, when they gave us the July 15th, letter, which took us for a shock, and one of the reasons they kind of showed us that, because we were beating them up a bit, saying, you know, why was this done in two different agreements? Why didn't you do it all together? What, you know? And they said, in their minds, they did. In their minds... In their minds, they weren't going to release the overall agreement until they got the binding letter agreement signed also. So in the state's mind, it was all one agreement, because they didn't release them back to the town until they had both documents signed.
Mike, can you just give us, I mean, so you don't get this agreement, the July 15th letter from Attorney Saxel, which are the representations that are being made, first time you see that is November 30th?
November 28th, actually.
28th. And in your involvement in the investigation of what happened, when you first got involved, did you ask to see all the documents from Attorney Saxel and from Mr. Flato, and everything the town had gotten involved in, and so that you knew a full scope of what this project was and how it had gotten to this point?
We didn't go to Mr. Flato. We did ask Attorney Saxel to prepare an entire binder on all the documents and relative attachments, and there is a four-inch-thick binder that lists the contracts, the 2010 agreement, the 2003 agreement, and a series of memos attached to this. However, there is no reference to the binding letter agreement, there's no reference to the July letter, and there's no reference to the June memos. There is a memo in there from September, from the state to the town, explaining that the $19.4 million would be given on an 80/20 match, an 80% reimbursement, similar to school projects, and other projects we've done with the state, but nothing relating to the binding letter agreement.
When did you first find out about the binding letter agreement?
I'm going to say that it was definitely late June, it might have been the last week in June.
And despite having a binder of all the documents, for some reason, a binding letter agreement that takes $6 million worth of revenue away from the state, right away from this town, was not included in the original binder of agreements that you received?
The, in response to that very question, Attorney Saxel said he forgot to include it.
Okay. So, Mr. Vittarelli, going back to you, after that June letter, which you subsequently got, so even after we discovered the July letter, we have to go back and discover that there's the June letter, because that wasn't available to First Selectman's office?
There are two June letters.
There are two June letters.
Right. There was, one letter was referenced in the December 7th, 2011, letter from Attorney Saxel to the board, in which he identified that there was an earlier letter, and then when I, I talked with him on the phone, he identified there was an additional letter, not to Attorney Redosovich, but to the Commissioner himself, from him.
Can I ask a follow-up for this? In your, page six of your PowerPoint, you talk about the July 15th letter being the third letter, the June 7th and 10th being the earlier letters, and that it weren't satisfactory to ConDOT. Is that your conclusion based on the fact that it's the third letter and it provides greater detail, or is that your conclusion based on conversations you've had directly with Attorney Saxel or Mr. Flato?
It was a combination of things, including conversations I had with both of them. If you would, I can show you, I could show you rather than tell you. In the letter that we provided supplemental analysis, we attach as one of the exhibits an email that, we reviewed some emails, it's part of our-
It should be the last page in the packet, if anybody's-
Yeah, it's, it may be earlier than that, Mr. Chairman. It's actually exhibit number five.
Sorry?
Footnote.
It's exhibit number five to the document. We have the full, the full email from Ken Flato to Richard Saxel, copying Denise Redosovich at the state. The date was July 14th, 2010, at 4:43 PM. Now, we had asked Mr. Tetro to have the IT department provide us with some emails, correspondence between certain folks, and this email came as one of the documents that we had retrieved and reviewed. And in this document, it says, I'll just read it for the record, from Mr. Flato to Dick Saxel, copying Denise Redosovich. "Dick, Denise, my goodness, this month-old question about the validity of the letter regarding the reimbursement of the annual bond from parking revenues has been resolved and is beyond reproach. This really has been put to bed, and I will not slash cannot take further unneeded actions which will hold this project up. First of all, when the attorney for a municipality has certified to the state DOT in writing that the quote letter quote, close quotes, is legally binding upon the town, that should be sufficient for you. Second, when a town legally adopted resolution passed by both the BOS in 2010 and by the RTM and BOF in a prior year, specifically stated, quote, 'The First Selectmen is authorized to apply for and accept any available state or federal grant in aid for the financing of the project,' close quotes, and further open quotes, 'to take all necessary action on behalf of town to receive such grants, including executing any necessary documents,' close quotes. This gives me, as First Selectman, complete authority to execute the letter regarding defining debt payments against parking revenues, as signed with DOT. This was part of the resolution the BOS reauthorized on May 5th, 2010. Why are we belaboring this? I have a $20 million construction contract that the town is awarding this week, quote, 'partly based upon the fact that we have a state aid agreement already,' close parenthesis. It's closed parentheses. I would like to go ahead with this tomorrow, Ken." So, that was the basis for us understanding that there was a 30-day lead into this.
Okay, do I understand this correctly, though? This final sentence here in that paragraph, "This was part of the resolution the BOS authorized on May 5th, 2010," is that telling the DOT that the binding letter of agreement was part of that resolution, was included in that packet?
That appears to be what it says. That's how I interpret it.
But it was not before the Board of Selectmen on May 5th, 2010?
That's, that's correct, and we confirm that.
All right. Binding letter didn't show up until June of 2011. This is telling the DOT that it was authorized, it was in the resolution and authorized on May 5th, 2010.
Correct.
Wow. Did you say you had some questions, Tom?
Jim, I'll give the floor to Kristin for that.
That's fine.
Did you have something tied to follow up on?
Well, I just wanted to follow up on the-
Go ahead.
Getting close to the July 15th, getting to the July 15th, 2010 letter, where now the Board of Selectmen is carbon copied on that. And both Sherry and I have confirmed that we've never received it and never seen it. The first time I saw it was when the First Selectmen sent it to me soon after, I guess, your meeting, saying, "Had you ever seen this before?" Because we had numerous discussions, and obviously, that had never come up.
And Selectman Walsh, that was confirmed not only by you and former Selectwoman Stenick, but also by Mr. Flato and Mr. Saxel.
So, and Mr. Saxel says he doesn't distribute it to the Board of Selectmen, because he presumes that the First Selectmen is going to distribute it to us.
Correct.
And then, several pages later, on page five, in paragraph one, though, Mr. Flato disagrees with him on that interpretation, because apparently, they have a discussion about whether they should distribute it to the Board of Selectmen. And it says Attorney Saxel knew if the July 15th, 2000, letter was distributed, it would raise questions.
I want to be, I want to be clear on that point. And you're absolutely right in the characterization. That was Mr. Flato's statement to me as to, as to what Mr. Saxel knew. So, Mr. Flato told me that's what he, he assumed that Mr. Saxel knew. It was nothing that I heard directly from Mr. Saxel, but Mr. Flato believed that was the reason.
So, Mr. Saxel's position is that he writes a letter, makes numerous representations to the state of Connecticut DOT, that they rely on for over a year, and fully fund their $19.4 million. And they know that there's inaccuracies in the letter. Neither Attorney Saxel nor First Selectman Flato correcting inaccuracies. Attorney Saxel doesn't believe he distributes, because he presumes that Mr. Saxel is going to distribute it. Mr. Flato's, though, view on that is that they both talked about distributing it, but that it wasn't, it wasn't going to be distributed, because Attorney Saxel knew, at least this is what Attorney, what Mr. Flato was saying, would raise questions.
Now, the one fact, I just want to clarify, you're absolutely right, the one thing that was, that was different was that Mr. Saxel was never going to directly carbon copy the Board of Select members. He believed that Mr. Flato was going to do that. However, they both had a discussion about the factual inaccuracies, and if, and we've written it out in our letter, so I'm just paraphrasing, but the decision, they discussed it, and the decision was made not to distribute it, because there were factual inaccuracies in it.
Okay, so they decided not to distribute it to the Board of Selectmen, because it has factual inaccuracies.
Correct.
But they do distribute it to the state of Connecticut.
And it had already been, at that point in time when that conversation occurred, the document had already been provided to the state of Connecticut, Denise Redosovich. She had it in hand, with the factual inaccuracies in it.
And they both know that the factual inaccuracies, they both represent to you separately, that they know there's factual inaccuracies.
Correct. Mr. Flato says when he saw the letter, which was not given to him to review, according to him, prior to it being sent to Denise Redosovich, he quickly read it and saw that there was a factual inaccuracy, contacted Attorney Saxel. At that point, they had the conversation, but it was after it had been sent to the state. And true, neither of them corrected the factual inaccuracies at any time with the state of Connecticut.
But, according to your commentary here, Mr. Flato at one point said he committed to Mr. Saxel that he would contact the Commissioner, correct?
In one of our, we talked twice on the phone on the day, I forget, maybe the 19th of December. He did say more than once that he had offered to contact the Commissioner, or the Acting Commissioner at the time, and had also, at one point, instructed Mr. Saxel to fix the letter. Later on, in the day, I got a telephone call from him after he had to do some errands at night, where he said to me that his recollection was clearer at this point, he never instructed Attorney Saxel to make a correction to the letter, but he never said to me that he never offered to talk to the Commissioner. He never took that away, but he told me he had never instructed Attorney Saxel to correct it.
Okay, and Attorney Saxel acknowledges that he realizes that a letter that the state considered materially significant was incorrect, had factual errors, which is why it wasn't distributing it out to the Board of Selectmen, and didn't take any action. And basically, states that the First Selectmen didn't instruct him to take any action to correct that.
You're absolutely correct.
Did he describe at any point, under his duties as town attorney, why he didn't initiate any of that action on his own?
He told me that he was not instructed by, and he was not given a specific instruction by Mr. Flato to correct the record. And in his view, the letter itself, the binding letter itself, was enforceable when it was signed by Mr. Flato earlier in the year, and that it was not a big deal. Not, you could use those terms, it's his words, but it was not a material issue that he felt he had to correct, and he thought that the July 15th letter was unnecessary. But, to your question, you asked me the question about whether he, you know, it's one of the points, was he acknowledged that the letter was material to the state. And I just think it's important that, those who are here may not have had the opportunity to read the letter, the closing sentence of the July 15th, 2010, letter says this, from Attorney Saxel. "I understand that the state of Connecticut and ConDOT are specifically relying on this letter from me as confirmation that the binding letter was duly authorized and executed, and is binding on the town of Fairfield." So to your point, specifically in the letter, it was written to have those, those words in it.
I've got one more question for Kristin.
Don't have it online.
Then one last one, before I turn the floor over to Kristin. In looking at the July 14th email, it seems the recurring theme here is, First Selectman Flato is basically saying, "That's it, no more, done, we don't need to do anything more, everything we've done up to this point is more than enough authorization to proceed." Did Attorney Saxel ever explain why after reading this email on July 14th, he then proceeded to continue to talk with Attorney, the DOT Attorney? Why he proceeded to print out that letter, sign it, and send it to DOT, without discussing that with First Selectman Flato?
We did not talk specifically about that issue, and he didn't mention to me whether this email had caused a reaction. I didn't address this email specifically with him. He did tell me conclusively, though, that on July 15th, he sent that letter, signed his name to it, and sent it to Denise Redosovich.
Did any feedback or commentary from then-First Selectman Flato, when he saw the letter that was sent with the factual inaccuracy, that the town attorney shouldn't have sent it, wasn't authorized to send it? We didn't talk about him sending it, he didn't let me know he was sending it? Anything along those lines?
Nothing like that came up. He said that he saw the letter, and then they discussed the factual inaccuracy. He didn't discuss anything beyond that, such as, he didn't specifically say to me that he didn't think Attorney Saxel was unauthorized in sending the letter.
Okay, and not being an attorney, is it common for an attorney, without instructions from his client, in this case, either the First Selectmen or the town, or the Board of Selectmen in that regard, to send a letter that a principal in a deal is demanding, and is a very significant and material part of the deal, at least from their perspective?
I'm not going to consider myself a legal expert, but to your question, if I'm working on a transaction, and I'm asked to render a legal opinion letter, firms, including, I've been, I worked for Robinson &amp; Co. before I came to McCarter recently, and both firms had very specific requirements for when you would render what's called a legal opinion letter, that would be relied upon by a party to a transaction as establishing a certain fact. And it would have to be a two-partner review and sign-off, as well as, in some cases, reviewed by a firm's general counsel, before you can do that, for a number of reasons. And that would be typically the case. And obviously, you would review it with your client before you sent it, so that the client understood the significance of the factual assertion.
Okay. As I'm looking at the July 15th letter, to pick up a phone and call and read that to somebody over the phone would take two minutes, three minutes?
Yeah, it would. That's about it.
Okay. Kristin, I think that-
I think that you're, the letter that you have provided, I know that will be made available to everyone in the public, so that people can read it in its entirety for themselves, along with the exhibits, I think really sets forth and clarifies a lot of the discussion that has taken place here today, and I think it's been helpful to go through. I think the question I have at this point, is there anything else that you feel has been overlooked in this conversation, in this investigation, in terms of where we are at this point?
I think the investigation is pretty concluded. I mean, the one thing that I can tell you is investigations get more difficult when there's disputes over basic facts. And in this case, there really is no dispute over any of the facts that would be, in my view, material to providing the analysis that we provided. So, at this point, nobody is denying, you know, the letter was never sent, or that it was never, the July 15th letter was never distributed until sometime, you know, in November of this year. So, from that vantage point, it was a relatively straightforward, you know, factual, fact-gathering exercise. You can always peel back the onion, but I think that, I think to understand, you know, where things stood with that document, these facts were pretty easy to discover, once we learned of the letters.
On page eight of your letter, really, the concluding paragraph, you essentially talk about, you're the conclusions in terms of the state, and in terms of what our recourse as a town may or may not be with respect to this binding letter, as it regards the state. And essentially, what I hear from you in this letter is that we're bound by this letter, that it has not been properly ratified, that for all practical purposes, we're pretty much bound by this letter. Mike?
For practical purposes, I'd agree with you. I think that where we are at this point, the fact that, you know, the state, the state's aware of, they were aware of the July 15th letter long before we were. They clearly relied upon it, they were not going to disperse or continue with paying over to us, or allowing us to obligate them to pay us the $19.4 back in 2010. And because of that, I think it's a difficult road for the town, where to try to go after the state and challenge at this point, because they did rely upon it. It's just, it's a factual analysis as much of a legal, as a practical analysis as much as it is a legal analysis.
I don't have further questions.
Mr. Walsh, back to you. Mr. Walsh, back to you.
To some extent, your report kind of fills in some of the missing pieces of the puzzle, because one of the initial questions we had for you is whether we can void the binding letter agreement, because they were separate agreement than the state agreement for the 19-4 form of them. So the July 15th letter, which was prepared by the state, or basically, or most of it was provided to Attorney Saxel by the state, was the state's attempt to basically tie those two agreements together, make them bound together, and, and basically make them one agreement.
Correct. I, I believe that's correct for the state's vantage point.
And that's what kills us, and that's what, you know, affects, and is almost the sole determinant of document in this matter, because without that, I think it sounds, my analysis, and I think it sounds like your analysis, would be, our case would be a lot stronger to be able to void that agreement, because there, we could say that there were two separate agreements.
Right. That's right. The state clearly regarded these all as linked together as one, one deal. And in the July 15th letter, simply, it, to the extent that there was any ambiguity about them being tied together, that was meant to tie it together for the state's benefit. I believe, if you went back and looked at the way they were drafted, you know, and the binding letter was drafted to clarify 4.3 of, of the original 2003 agreement, the intent was that this was all the revised deal.
You have a follow-up?
Okay. Joe, go ahead.
You're, you're assuming that intent, you didn't talk directly to the state about their perspective on that?
No, we did not. We did not.
Yeah, I, I will clarify. The state very directly said it was all one agreement. They would not have released the contracts, the state-town agreement signed in March of 2010, until they had this agreement. And it's my understanding, they physically did not release it, even though they signed it, until they had both pieces of paper with signatures, and then released them to the town. Because it, we went after them pretty hard on the binding letter agreement, on the fact that you really didn't give us 19.4 million, you gave us 13.4 million, because you took 6 million back. We worked very hard over a couple of month period there to get them to let go of the 6 million. And multiple times over the course of that, they came back with, was all one, but their attorney reaffirmed that when she described the transaction on November 28th of this year, and that was when she came out with the July letter and showed that, that, needless to say, stopped the conversation for quite a bit.
Same attorney?
Same attorney.
Denise Rados, yes.
So despite investigating this thing for almost six months, it's not till November 28th that we really get one of the major agreements that basically answers a lot of the questions on why the state's acting the way they're acting, and we don't have answers on why we can't do certain things.
To that point, did either Attorney Saxel or the former First Selectman describe why the July letter lay hidden for so long and wasn't part of any of the files that were distributed on this end, or part of the communication packets that were turned over?
There was no, there was no real conclusive explanation, other than it was, they sort of put it aside and forgot about it, and that, and they went back, I think, in Attorney Saxel's view, and also in Attorney, in Mr. Flato's view, they believed it was not necessary, it was not a necessary part of the deal documents, because they always regarded it as enforceable based upon Attorney Saxel's original analysis of it back in the, in the spring of 2005, that it was, or 2010, that it was something that the first elect, the former First Selectman was able to sign without further authority or further action by any board.
And Attorney Saxel never described why he bothered to sign it if it wasn't necessary?
Other than it was required by the state, that the state wanted it.
Okay. Did he acknowledge it was required by the state?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So he acknowledged it as material, he acknowledged it as required by the state?
And he said it, he said it, and the way that I get to that conclusion is, if you look at the letters themselves, I was under a lot of pressure, I hastily reviewed it, I included language that Denise Radosovich wanted in the letter. That's what tells me that the state wanted it, he was under a lot of pressure to get it done, and he knew the state needed it, needed to get it done before the 19-4 could be distributed, or before the state would be obligated to the 19-4.
And again, on the, the binding letter, given both Attorney Saxel and First Selectman Flato believe they had complete authority to sign this, that it's all part of the 2003 agreement, this is just a clarification of the 2010, we have all the authority we need, we don't need to bring this to another board, we don't need to bring this to anybody else, given it's that strong, given it's such a good deal for the town, did either one ever explain why they didn't disclose it? This is a good deal, let's tell everybody about it. I don't need your approval, but I should be able to show it to you, it's a good thing. This is, look at what I did, look at what we accomplished, look what we put together, we're getting things moving forward. Did they ever explain why they kept it hidden, why they kept it secret, why nobody got to see the binding letter agreement? I understand the July letter, because you don't want to show that, because it tells you about the binding letter, plus it's factual and accurate, plus at some point, the DOT might know that it wasn't distributed to anybody, but the binding letter, which every, they're both saying they had all the authority they needed to sign it, they didn't need anybody else's approval, they didn't even have to include it in the packet, why not tell everybody about it? What, why keep it hidden, why keep it secret? Did they give you any indication as to what took place?
Their, their point was that it was a discussion, it was, it was an oral discussion that took place in the early spring, late winter, early spring of 2010, maybe going back even to 2009, where there'd been an agreement to restructure the way the revenues would be, would be spent, that they, that they believed it was a clarification of the original deal, even though the, the bond principal on the 19.4 million was not something that was even existence or thought of until 2010. And then, I think the best evidence, even though it related to the July letter, was when Mr. Flato told me that the reason why he believed Mr. Saxel wouldn't, you know, didn't, agreed not to distribute the letter was because it would raise, the July 15th letter would raise questions about the binding agreement that had not been seen by people either, that would raise questions by boards and commissions. That's, that's the reason why I think the binding letter was not distributed.
And they said it would, because it would raise questions by boards, commissions, that's one of the...
That was the words from Mr. Flato when I spoke to him, that he believed, Mr. Saxel didn't believe it should be distributed at that point, because it might raise questions. That was his, his belief of what Mr. Saxel's believed.
Okay. But Mr. Saxel said, "Don't distribute it," if he didn't kind of give the full explanation of that, and so the First Selectman's saying, they both discussed it, and they both, in essence, agreed not to distribute it, because it would raise questions.
Well, they both agreed not to distribute it, and Mr. Flato said that Mr. Saxel acknowledged that if it was distributed, it would raise questions about not only the July 15th letter, but the binding letter agreement.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Number one, in the binding agreement, it not just only gave up, it not only made the 20, the 19.4 million dollars amortized over 20 years in expense, it also expanded the definition of what expenses were, because the 2003 agreement stated that, gave the town the first $300,000 in revenue above actual operating and maintenance expenses of the surface parking area. But in the binding letter agreement, it changes that to say that it's, at first, it's going to be, the operating expenses are going to be determined to be the construction, inspection, and maintenance of the Fairfield Metro Station. So doesn't it now include broader, broader language in there? Wouldn't it be the maintenance now of the whole station itself, too? Not just the surface parking area?
The binding letter says, let's see here. Okay. It says that the, the, the debt service, the principal on the 19.4 million would be included as part of the calculation of annual operating and maintenance costs for the surface parking area improvements, which is the same as it was in the other agreement. And that says O&M expenses of the new commuter parking lot. So it seems like it might have expanded, because, you know, it makes reference to the new commuter parking lot.
Okay.
But, but it, I, I don't see that language that it, that it went, show me the language where you're...
Actually, I see what you're saying now. Okay. So do you think it expands it, or no, you don't think it expands it?
It's unclear.
Yeah.
Because it's sort of, it's, you know, it's, you know, it says of the new commuter parking, it sounds like the surface parking area is the new commuter parking lot. I'm not sure exactly what they were intending on that, but I understood this to mean that on the, on the pay parking lot, which we would get revenues, that they would be able to take O&M expenses under both. It's the debt service was the difference between the first 4.3 and the revision from the binding agreement.
I just want to get back to the opinion letter, which I guess is an opinion letter, is that what you called the July 15th letter?
Yes, I would.
Okay. And you've issued opinion letters before, have you?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Your firm's app.
Yep.
Mr. Saxel at least represented to you that he was not directed by the First Selectman to notify the state of the change or to amend that letter.
Correct.
But Mr. Saxel's client is the town of Fairfield, correct? It's not, it's not, it's not Mr. Flato.
That's correct.
It's the town of Fairfield. So if you were issuing a, a letter, or an attorney's issuing a letter, isn't it the attorney's obligation to correct the letter? If you are now making, you know you've made inaccurate representations?
Again, I'm not a legal, professional responsibility expert, but there is a, a Rule 4.1, which requires you, if you're an attorney making statements of fact, material facts upon which someone relies, you have an obligation to be candid and correct those. You also have obligations to your client to brief them on facts. You have fiduciary duties to your client to provide them with information. But again, I'm not, I'm not a legal expert in those things, but, but those are things we commonly understand.
But it's your end opinion that, based on that July 15th, 2010 letter, that legally you don't think we'd be able to avoid the agreement, the, the binding letter agreement, correct?
Yes. I think it would be a very difficult case, and I think also you have limited recourse against the state. You know, you, you, you're not going to have a right to sue the state directly under that 2003 agreement. So to the extent it's related, you may have to go through a claims commission process. So it's not, and, and even then, I, I think it's a difficult, it's a difficult equitable argument for a court looking at this to say, you know, that's not the bargain that the state struck.
So this is similar to, a little bit similar to the other argument your firm had made with Mr. Fisher, in that we took the state's money, we knew of the inaccuracies in the letters that we let them rely on, we still took the money and spent it.
Well, I, I think it's a little different. I think what Attorney Fisher had said was that with respect to the closing letter and state-town agreements, that those were, those were provided to the boards and commissions, they, they had a chance to see them. The project progressed to the point where it was substantially completed, now we have a train station, and at that point, you're really, legally speaking, under, under Connecticut law, it's, there is a strong argument that those agreements have been ratified by conduct or, or inaction, is the, is the case to say, and those agreements would be enforceable. That's, that's a separate issue. I think this issue is that we've substantially completed the projects, the state has relied upon these, these, this July 15th letter as giving it comfort that the binding letter agreement was approved, and we're almost done with the project, and the state exercised its level of diligence to find out what the appropriate process would have been for approvals under, under the town charter and under, under state law, based upon the town attorney's opinion. Because of that, it comes down to a fairness point, it's slightly different than the other agreements.
Slightly different, but there are some parts that are the same, because the July 15th letter says basically they're the same.
Correct. That's exactly right.
They're the same agreement.
Correct.
Once again, if they are the same agreement, we took the 19.4 million dollars, because they wouldn't have given us the 19.4 without that letter.
Correct. No question.
You okay for now?
I'm okay with that for questions, Joe.
All right. Kristen, do you have anything else?
No more questions.
All right. Attorney Figaro, it seems like the, the elephant in the room, frankly, is that if, if we, there's no recourse against the state, what are the recourse options against either former First Selectman Flato or Attorney Saxel?
I mean, there's recourse options theoretically, you've recourse options for agreeing to the binding letter agreement in case of Mr. Flato, which would have been an act for which he was not authorized to, to enter that agreement on behalf of the town without further authority. In, in the case of, of Mr. Saxel, you have your, you know, legal malpractice or maybe breach of fiduciary duty type claims, it could be potentially asserted. Those are, those are the basic types of, of, of claims that upon further investigation could be ones that the town, the town could consider.
You know, again, not being the attorney in this, what, what's the likelihood of success in those? What, what are some of the issues that, that those resolve or involve on?
Well, the, the first thing is, anytime you take legal action of this nature, you're, you're dealing with some pretty complicated facts and circumstances, so you've got legal cost issues that come up. And as a business decision, you've got to consider what's, what's recoverable. You've got two individuals, there may be insurance involved, at least in the case of Attorney Saxel, there may be insurance involved, in the case of Mr. Flato, nature of homeowners' insurance or general liability, insurance if he hasn't. The limits of those policies, I don't know. I, I, I wouldn't imagine that they're going to be, you know, enough to go after a substantial part of the revenues that folks might believe. They would want to see them provided to the town, but there'd be a limited amount of money. Out of the, out of the policy limits would come the defense costs for those individuals. They would have to, so whatever, if there was a million dollars in, in liability coverage, for example, for one of them, and it costs $500,000 in legal fees over the course of three or four years, because this would be the kind of a case where you'd have depositions of a number of public officials, members of boards and commissions, anybody who touched the project might very well be brought into the, into the mix. There would be expert costs that would have to be fronted by the town. You know, we talked already about maybe damages being something that needs to be proven in this type of a case, and what's the damage? We don't have a parking lot that's operating yet. I'm not sure whether there's even commuters on it as of today, but once the commuters start working on that, getting on that project and, and start using the, the facility, at that point, the revenue sharing period starts, that's got a 20-year window. No one is to say at this point how much revenue is going to be generated by the parking facilities, it's still speculative. So while there's been some mention of $6 million, it, it may not even be close to that. There may, even of the original revenue sharing formula, depending upon how much parking is, is let, what kind of revenues are received, how much it costs for the operating and maintenance expenses, and what the state's going to regard as appropriate operating and maintenance expenses for the parking facilities, there may not be much there, there, to go after. So those are some of the points, just generally speaking, from a, from a, from a damage assessment. So if, if you, if you win, then what? And if, if you get a big recovery, are the individuals or their insurance carriers going to have the wherewithal to be able to reimburse us, assuming the town were successful in that type of thing? And I wouldn't imagine that there's that much coverage, to be very frank. There's also a causation issue. You know, if you look at this...
Please explain that.
Let me explain to you what that means. The only way you get to revenues from the parking area is if the train station gets constructed, trains run, commuters park there, and revenue's generated. If there's no, if there's no train station, there's no parking revenues. So if all of a sudden we go back to July 15th and say, "Well, here's, the problem was, there should have been something done in July of 2010, and there should have been some disclosures made." Well, because we, because, because if there had been, we'd get this revenue. Well, if the disclosures had been made, there wouldn't be any revenue to be had, if, if you follow me, there would be no parking revenue, because if, if you're right, there's no train station. So if you were to accept the fact that the revenues would only be generated if there was a train station, there is a train station now, that's the only way you get into the revenues. So there's a proof problem there, I think, to prove that there's a causal relationship between whatever breached, whatever duty was breached and, and, and what share of the revenues the town would get. So I think that's a, a place that the town is going to have to grapple with in a litigation, very frankly. There's also, there's also some other, you know, other issues as well, you know, there's, that would complicate things, but, you know, if, the, part of the case might be by the defendants in, in that situation is that, you know, there was a, a strong groundswell of support for the project, they would have gone through anyway, you know, and, and it would have gone through with the revenue sharing exactly the way it is, under the binding letter agreement. So litigation is, is, you know, it's, it's a difficult time for a town, a small town like this, and, and one thing I would ask, you know, the folks to consider is, is you look at this, is do you want to go through and bankroll this type of a thing, which is going to bring a lot of people into, into the fore? When you, when you bring these types of claims, there's a lot of things that are privileged, some of the attorney-client privilege. If you get into some of this, get into some of this, the privilege gets waived as part of a public legal action. And, and there's some things that are better left for being done under the cloak of privilege, for a lot of reasons. Businesses do it every day, there's nothing illegal about it, it's perfectly permissible. But when you get into litigation of this nature, it exposes some of that. And, and there's been enough exposure in some ways of, of, through the reports, to demonstrate what's happened here for, for people who wanted to have some clarity on it. Some of the other stuff may be peripheral, or maybe even unrelated, generally to, to the issues that we've been discussing with respect to the train station project. And there's also issues, too, that, you know, you've got public officials here in some cases, you know, do you, do you want to have the town going after public officials individually? What message does it send to people who... What message does it send to people who are in public office or in public positions? Those are some of the things that I think would be, make this type of thing very difficult for a town like this. And you're looking back over circumstances that occurred, now they occurred a year ago, but you know, when the litigation's over, maybe it's three, four, or five years down the road, it becomes a lot of effort for, what at the end of the day may not be much recovery for the town. It's a question of, do you want to devote your resources to that? And I think it would be a tough, it would be a tough thing for the town to be able to go after, especially since we don't have, you know, the causation and the damages at the end of the rainbow, whether those are even recoverable is very, very difficult.
Any comments before we wrap this up?
Comments? Yes, am I going first?
Oh, maybe first. Yeah, comments. Thank you for the thorough analysis and bringing things into the light of day, and I think that that's one of the biggest things that's been tried to be accomplished here is to try and bring out those relevant facts that were important for the town to be able to know what's happened in this process and to be able to make a decision as to next steps. And at this point, you know, I'm looking at what's our goal going forward from here? And what I hear you saying today is your best legal advice and opinion is, we're not going, we're not advised to sue the state. What you just said essentially says that there are a lot of pitfalls to trying to take action against either Attorney Saxel or the former First Selectman, which essentially leaves us with, we are where we are, right? We're obligated, if we choose not to act, which sounds like a very possible choice, that we are here. And I think, now I guess I just want to say, thankfully, we do have a train station, and as you pointed out in terms of the causation piece, we have an operating train station, which is a wonderful thing for, especially for those commuters who are there. How we got here has been troubling in certain respects. And I think the critical thing for me is that we may not be able to take specific, or we may not choose, excuse me, let me say that again, we may not choose to take specific actions from here based on this, but what's absolutely critical is that we learn the lessons of the very significant mistakes that were made along the way and be clear that, you know, this board, the three of us, and that our town boards and commissions follow the appropriate steps and processes and, you know, have the kind of transparency that will allow us to not have anything like this happen again. So, I mean, that's, I think that's my, my general sense at this point is that, you know, I'm grateful that we have a train station. Disturbed at many of the things that have been brought forward today. But in terms of taking specific action, I think that the costs that you have outlined for us and that I agree with would most likely outweigh any potential benefit. I'm open to conversation and--
Mr. Walsh, any final comments?
Yes. I guess, number one, I want to thank Mr. Vitarelli for doing a very thorough analysis, and at least we finally got to, I think, some of the missing documents that kind of pieced together this picture of what had happened. And I think it was very important for this board, on behalf of the public, to get to the bottom of exactly what happened and to have a full picture of what really happened throughout the renegotiation of this contract, how we got to the cost overruns, and what allowed that to happen, and how we got on the hook for some of these things. And some of this stuff and documents, I think, took way too long to come out. I don't know how some of these documents, people either forgot about, or, you know, why we're being handed documents from our town that we gave and we have no knowledge of after a thorough investigation or being turned over on November 28th of 2011, well into your investigation on this report, is extremely concerning and disappointing. But when I look at this entire project and what we've kind of gone through, we have to acknowledge that we were at a difficult point with the developer who was going through some financial problems. And we have to acknowledge that we had a project and a station that the state had built that was a station to nowhere, there was no way to get to it. It was a state-of-the-art railroad station, and clearly something needed to be done. The problem that has come out throughout this entire investigation is that, is the way I feel, is that the ends don't justify the means. Just because the station is great, and I think it's great, and I think for the next hundred or more years, we're going to look back on this and say it was a great thing, and probably one day say it was cheap. It's hard to say that right now and to tell the taxpayer that. But at some point, I think, once the buildings and stuff are built around it, it's a beautiful station, I think it's a great idea, I voted on it in 2003, I still think it's a great thing. But the problem is, is that just because, you know, the ends or what we were trying to get to was a great thing, does not give people the, you know, ability to avoid the charter, keep documents private, copy members of this board of selectmen, carbon copy people on this board of selectmen, as though we're getting in and representing to the state and using that to seem like, oh, the whole board of selectmen knows about it, they would raise their hands if there was a problem. So that's a huge problem for me. It's just, there seems to have been a mindset by the prior administration that under no circumstances did they want to take this agreement to any other town body, or let them know about it. I, no one will ever be able to explain to me how Sherry Stenick is sitting at this table, voting on the state agreement for $19.4 million, and doesn't have the right to see this binding letter agreement taking away $6 million worth of revenue from this town. No one's ever going to be able to explain to me. That is an integral part of that agreement. That is something that should have come out when the $19.4 million came out, it should have just been represented. In exchange for that, we're going to give up these revenues over the next 20 years. But it never was. Matter of fact, this agreement's not even found until this whole cost overrun situation comes, and you guys are trying to figure out what's going on a year and a half later. It's not kept in our, in the First Selectman's office, it's not kept in any binder of all the agreements that we have. It's, oh, we forgot to give it to you. You know, we forgot, we forgot, we forgot. I mean, there's only so much, it's, they're just, you know, and maybe because it involved myself, I take it a little more personally, but the fact that I was put on to the board of selectmen at the end of a meeting, after this $19.4 million, I can't say that that wasn't purposely done. At the time, I asked the First Selectman about that, right before the meeting, I'm like, why am I being sworn in at the end? His response to me is, Jim, that's what it's always done. I took him at his word. And looking back at prior appointments, we always do appointments at the beginning of every meeting, and there wasn't one time where someone was put on at the end of a meeting. So it's the whole, I don't know, the whole analysis of this whole thing, it seemed to suggest that prior administration and the town attorney were basically running this process to try to get this agreement through and all the agreements, but without having any intent of ever going to any town body. And Mr. Vitarelli, your firm did an analysis showing that under our charter, it was required that it should have gone through our, all these other bodies. I completely agree that it should have. I have concerns about how we protect that from happening again, other than, you know, I feel confident that the three of us, having gone through this, will ensure that happens. But I believe that it gets us to the level of, you know, and I'm going to request it, doing some type of charter revision, where we actually put something in our charter that says that if the town bodies, the three bodies that approved it, if something goes through and the deal changes, the finances change, whatever, it has to go back to all three bodies, so that we cannot have an interpretation in the future where someone can say the exact same thing and rely on something in a bonding resolution saying that the First Selectman is authorized to sign all documents. That's a standard line in every bonding agreement. Every bonding agreement we do, so to prevent it from every tiny little document coming, that we have to go back to all the town bodies to sign it. But no one ever thought that that was, that that line was ever going to be used to say that he, that the First Selectman could sign all these agreements, this binding letter agreement, without having to take it back to all the town bodies. There was no transparency in this agreement. Everything was, I thought everything was going fine in this agreement, to be quite honest with you, up until the revisions that we did back in 2010. And then there was no transparency on it. There was no transparency. You cannot tell me there's transparency on a transaction when you have a one-letter binding agreement removing $6 million worth of revenue, and no one, this does not find the light of day to the public unless, until you bring it to us, Mr. Tetra, in late June, early July of this year. The public deserves better. The members of the boards and commissions, the RTMs, the Board of Finances deserve better and to have this stuff brought before them as elected officials. But I really think that we're going to need to do a charter revision. I mean, there's got to be some way to correct this so that this doesn't happen again. There's going to have to be some way, and I cannot think of how to do it with town code. I think we're going to have to make some more definitive definitions in our town charter to prevent this from happening again. Because despite the train station being a great thing, there's a lot of disappointment at a lot of different levels, that we did not have any transparency in this, and there just seems to be a great effort on a lot of levels to try to hide documents, not disclose documents, not disclose the full transaction in going forward. The state, I think, recognized that. I mean, to be quite honest with you, I thought the state did a great job on their own accord. I was actually proud of our state attorneys, to realize that they might not have a binding agreement, and to protect the state's interest. And to actually require that July 15 letter, not taking a three paragraph letter, requiring it to be everything they wanted it to be before they would release the state of Connecticut taxpayers' money. But, you know, copying the board of selectmen when, you know, and knowing that there's inaccuracies and not correcting any of that is not right, and our town deserves better.
No argument.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Just in closing, it's just a couple of thoughts. One is that, you know, you grew up in this town. You watched what happens in DC, you watched what happens at Hartford, you watched some of the scandals, and you think, no, that's up there, but in Fairfield, we're different. And yet I found myself, after the recent RTM meeting, calling up Commissioner Reddiker, the DOT, saying, hey, last night, it passed. Three million agreement, $3 million supplemental agreements all signed off on. My next question was, what do I have to send you to prove that really happened? I'm not sure if First Selectman's ever asked that question before. And it's not a position that's fun to be in. I would use the word disappointed, as has been bandied about, but frankly, I don't know if that's strong enough for how I feel about what's going on. There was no approval process for the contract, there was no approval process for the binding letter. No one disclosed the change in terms in giving away the parking revenue. And I guess one of the challenges is, is that we might disagree over where the authority was, we might have an open argument about whether there was authority or whether this applied in that clause, or whether the charter says this is okay or not. But if you don't show us the agreement, we can't disagree. If you don't tell us something changed, we can't disagree. And it's the hidden and secrecy surrounding all this. I can't believe the two top leaders in town having a discussion saying, we won't disclose this because it's factual and error, we won't disclose this because it might generate questions. We won't disclose, even though we have authority to do this, we won't disclose this because somebody might question our authority. That's not what democracy's based on, that's not what this government's based on, that's not what our charter's based on. So I guess when I look at, you know, what we have to learn, I guess I look at what change to make. If people are going to do things behind closed doors, if people are going to hide things from the public, if people are going to hide things from other officials, if people are going to issue, somebody may believe they have the authority, but nobody argued they had the right to keep it secret. Nobody had the right to hide it from the board of selectmen, the board of finance, the RTM, and more importantly, the people of our town. We have these meetings on fair TV, so that we can have the whole town sit in. The great thing about technology is we have virtual town meetings, so everybody can participate. You know, we talk to our kids about, and I sat in a Rotary Club meeting the other day, and they go through a series of their values at the end, and I've only sat in a couple, so I'm not going to get this quite right, but in essence, it says, as part of your four guidelines, it's somewhere, and it says something effective, do what's right. When I look back on that July letter, it misrepresented material facts to the state. We're getting $20 million from the state, and it's okay to misrepresent to them what's happened at this end. I don't know how as a town, we have to overcome that in terms of our reputation, the damage to this town, the damage to our credibility at the state level. The downside of fair TV is many of the state officials watch this on demand. I just, I've worked with too many attorneys in this town in my 15 years in real estate and to, and I just can't believe many, if any, would not correct a material letter that's part of getting a $20 million deal done by this town. I can't believe that any would send that letter off without discussing it with their client first, especially given the email that was sent on July 14th, the day before, with all the, you know, we've had enough of this, we're not going to do anything more. I can't believe the former First Selectman, after promising to talk to the DOT commissioner, did not call the DOT commissioner. I can't believe the former First Selectman allowed the town attorney to forget about sending the correction. This is not third grade and you're doing your homework. You can't just say, I forgot to do it. This is important stuff. These are important matters to the town bodies, and we all have a fiduciary responsibility, an ethical obligation. I don't know, I just don't know how to explain this many things not happened and the excuse coming back to, I forgot. When I look at the July 14 email as we did, and it says at the end that the binding letter was included in the packet for board of selectman approval, I just, I don't know how to describe that. Misrepresentation just doesn't seem strong enough. I know we asked for all the contracts and letters to get our arms around this deal, both when First Selectman Stenick was in office and when I was in office. And as I mentioned previously, we've got about a four-inch-thick binder that has all this, it was passed out to all the members of the project team, so we would have all the relevant documentation. And the binding letter, the July 15 letter, the other correspondence, just were not in them. You could have, we sat in stunned silence on the 28th. When we're here trying to negotiate the final deal for the supplemental agreement, we're sitting here trying to dot the i's and cross the t's, we're trying to get the train station opened that Friday, this is Monday afternoon. We have a three-hour meeting with DOT, and somewhere in the middle of that, they were getting hard to deal with. So we started to beat them up about taking the $6 million back from us, and how they're beating up on poor little Fairfield here. And then they popped this letter out and said, no, you guys know all about this, not a problem. And there was dead silence. a problem. And there was dead silence, I think for minutes, going on to that. So, yeah, I guess if we have to learn something for this, we have to learn to do what's right. If we have to learn something from this, we have to learn this is public government, we have to do it in public. There are certainly select items for private executive session where we do it for contract negotiations, land buys, and a couple of other very specific, very limited items. But the rest of this is to be done in public. And I guess I look at this where we run into trouble, is when we stop doing things in public. I look at this when we run into trouble, is we stop being open. And I look at this when we run into trouble and we start being afraid of questions. And I think this whole, our whole government is based on a Board of Selectmen, a Board of Finance, an RTM, various other boards and commissions, all built around the idea of allowing the public to come and ask questions before items are voted on, before items that are going to affect our way of life. So I guess that's all I have to say for now.
Mr. Vittrelli, thank you very much for coming down here. Thank you for not only the excellent presentation today, but the work you've done over the past few months to walk us through all of this and help us understand the legal implications of what we're going through here too. So, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon any communications, there are none at this time. To hear and consider and act upon any other business which shall properly come before this meeting, there's none at this time. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some other comments?
Not on a report before this body. It's not our custom. Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, when we do that for items we're voting on, we generally don't do it for items that we're reporting.